This is Beth Cassavant. This is the Tuesday, March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Board of Selectmen. As a preliminary matter, this is Beth Cassavant, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
John Samia.
Present.
Morris DiPaolo.
Present.
James Kane.
Yes, good evening.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Press, present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the Chair, will introduce each board member or staff member who has the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members first and then to staff members inviting each to provide comments or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you are not speaking, as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First item on our agenda this evening is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one and February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
No further comments or questions? Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mr. Samia?
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Aye.
Mr. Kane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. The next item is announcements and reports. Are there any announcements from anyone this evening? I'm not seeing any. We're going to move on to number four, which is the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, Board members. Just one update and reminder to you that at your next meeting, we'll present the draft annual town meeting warrant to you for the first time. And we will also be prepared to discuss some logistical matters related to town meetings, get your feedback on how we will proceed, as we need to kind of lock in our approach to it again for the meeting that's been scheduled for May twenty-second. So we'll provide that to you in advance of the meeting and get your feedback once we get here. And I will share my screen if that's okay with the Chair and move on to the COVID report.
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, positive case update. We're up to two thousand five hundred and eighty-five total positive cases, an increase of eighty-seven since the last board selectman meeting. That number has been rather flat for a two-week period, which is well below what we had been seeing in the peak throughout the winter. Although we never thought on March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, we received our first case that on March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, we'd still be having this conversation, but of course we are. We are moving very close to returning to a green status. In order to do so, our daily incidents would have to fall below ten. At the last meeting, we were at thirty and now we're at sixteen, so it's my hope that hopefully when you have your next regularly scheduled meeting, two weeks from now, that we would be in a green status. Our positivity, which is down to two point three percent, is below five, which would enable us to go to green, but we need to be both below ten daily incidents per hundred thousand and below five percent. So we're, one of our metrics is there and we're just waiting on the other one. Continue to report cases on a daily basis. Unfortunately, since your last meeting, there has been one additional COVID-related death indicated, bringing our total to sixty-three since the start. We will likely be changing or we will be changing the status of town buildings within the coming weeks. We are hoping that if it's possible with this week's weekly report, we'll be green, we'll be able to open things back up, although that's not the final determinant. We are at a very comfortable level to open things back up by appointment only. And we will do so and inform the board when we move there. We continue to be in a full hybrid model with fifty percent of staff reporting every other week and the others working from home very effectively. With regards to updates on the vaccine, liking the numbers, they continue to go up. You can see residents age sixty-five plus through the beginning of this week, we've had three thousand six hundred and forty-four residents receive at least one dose. That's roughly ten percent of a total residence, so that's good. One thousand one hundred and twenty-seven with two. And then all residents who are eligible through the phase that we're in right now, almost seventy-four hundred, so nearly double that. So pleased to see these numbers. We're currently still in phase two, group two, age sixty-five to seventy-four, and also individuals with certain medical conditions. And of course, since your last meeting, we were notified that effective March eleventh, K through twelve educators and similar positions across the Commonwealth will be eligible for the vaccine. Unfortunately, there's no additional vaccine that's been specifically earmarked or set aside for these individuals, but we have heard good stories that the federal government has indicated CVS will be working with these groups and we continue to do our best efforts through the Central Mass Regional Public Health Alliance to identify vaccines once it becomes available if we're able to continue to administer it. We're also making great progress on the very narrow, unfortunately, definition of shut-ins and getting to those individuals with the help of Shrewsbury EMTs on our fire department. And we are happy to also report that the Shrewsbury Housing Authority has been a great partner and is working with Stop and Shop to get all of their eligible residents the vaccine and has indicated should, they've requested that we provide them with a additional names of individuals so we could rapidly contact them at the end of their clinics if there are any vaccine available. At the end of the day, that we can get other individuals in, of course, not waste the vaccine. So we will be doing that once their clinics are scheduled and they have the vaccine in hand. We continue to encourage residents to reach out to us if they haven't done so, especially if you know someone who is mobility challenged and is unable to leave the home even for routine medical appointments, we would be able to come to the home and administer the vaccine under those conditions. You can contact the Shrewsbury Council on Aging or really any general number within the town and we'll direct you to the right office. Of course, our digital resources remain available and we are preparing a additional code red messaging so we can ensure that we're reaching all individuals that are eligible at this time. With regards to the overall picture, over the course of the last year, March is a much more palatable month for us thus far. Ten days, nine days in, fifty-six cases. Looks very similar, honestly, to last May as a comparison or October. So we're still not clearly out of the woods yet, but we're way off the high numbers of the winter months. Our trends continue to be favorable, although the seven-day trend is a little greater than the fourteen-day trend. The numbers have been so variable between zero, thankfully, one day, and highs in the low twenties. I don't see this being a trend, but we'll continue to keep our eye on it, but the fourteen-day trend is better than the thirty-day trend and so forth. The curve, as I note every, every time that we get to it, I'm not concerned about the uptick on the far right side. Again, the anomalies that I've talked about with the wide-ranging swings in cases on a day-to-day basis, those look like there's an uptick, but it normally levels itself out by the time you get through a full week or two cycle. I'm updating the, the total age analysis with that twenty-year age bracket at the beginning continues to be the, the highest number of total cases. But if you were to divide that in half, it would be split among the individual or the two decade-long age cohorts. We're unable to confirm that because we just don't have that type of data. That's the end of my report for this evening and we'd be happy to answer any questions of the board.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mizikar? I have one. What is the criteria that we will use in determining when to reopen the library?
We have been working across all town buildings and trying to apply consistent rules. We have not come back to a point where we've allowed any buildings to, to kind of fully open. So everything's been on appointment-by-appointment basis, but the library has allowed individuals to come in and pick things up. We were almost closed last fall to let individuals come back in and browse on a very limited basis. But likely, those conversations will begin in earnest once we get back to a green level, because I think we are in a better position to stay at a much longer level once we get there. And I hope that it will be open at the latest by this summer, but I would foresee restrictions in place really for quite some time, including the summer months. As you probably know, the CDC issued some revised guidance about eligibility of individuals that are vaccinated. So that's kind of really, I think, a positive step for us all to think about the benefits of getting vaccinated and then allowing institutions and settings like that to open up more fully.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further questions, that brings us to new business. And item number six is a discussion of the potential proposition two and a half operational override and the draft agreement between the Board of Selectmen School Committee and residents of Shrewsbury. We have a separate folder now in our drive for these documents. And just to bring the public up to speed, we did have a meeting last Tuesday evening with the school committee and leadership to discuss the proposition two and a half override and what it would look like. And we are talking through and looking at drafts of agreements that we would make between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, but also with the residents of Shrewsbury. So, Mr. Mizikar, if you'd like to take it from here.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I think if, if the board is okay with it, Madam Chair, I will work my way through some prepared slides that are more financially based. I think that provides a, a good backdrop for any conversations that you do want to have with regard to those agreements.
Yeah, thank you.
Share my screen. So, Board members, I wanted to work through a series of topics with you and also, if I may, provide some insight on both historically how things have played out financially and then looking forward, an approach that, that we can begin to think about if an override question is going to be asked with regards to future impacts, positive impacts on municipal operations. These are all very preliminary and we have not certainly had a time just to sit down and work on this one-on-one. But given the, the indications that came from your joint meeting with the school committee and requests by the board for me to begin to put a framework around this, I thought it would be important to kind of provide a little bit of insight to you this evening. So I'm going to start with the historical figures and I'm going to work through a series of charts and graphs. And please don't hesitate to stop me if there's a question. Really just trying to set the context for how things have played out. So what I'm showing on the screen is an analysis of the last eighteen years. To be quite honest with you, this data was readily assembled, so kind of an odd period of years, but I think it's sufficient in duration to kind of illustrate a, a long-term trend to you. So whenever I look at that data from two thousand and three to two thousand and twenty, from a dollar standpoint on the municipal side, we've seen average increase year-over-year of six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And that's ranged anywhere from three point four million dollar year-over-year increase to a reduction year-over-year funding of nearly one million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. Looking at the school budget, average increase year-over-year for that eighteen-year period is a little over two million, again with, with a much broader range of five point two million, which actually went to the schools in two thousand and fifteen after the previous override to a low of a reduction of one point one million. Those significant reductions primarily occurred in the Great Recession of the two thousand eight through the two thousand and ten timeframe. So looking at those numbers on a percentage basis for that long duration of a period, we've seen the average year-over-year change for the municipal side, three point two eight percent, education four point four seven. As we think about the override, I, I, the more I look at the numbers, the more I see a need to trend and look at two separate areas of the budget outside of the pure municipal and education. That is operating support. Of course, the board is familiar that the largest category of operating support is health insurance, the town's responsibility as an employer. Also includes other things that benefit both town and, excuse me, municipal and educational operations. Things like unemployment insurance, the town's contribution as an employer to FICA, general insurance, which provides liability coverage, accident coverage to municipal and school operations. So, and then, of course, debt service. The vast majority of our debt service is excluded from provisions of Proposition Two and a Half. Therefore, while it impacts the tax rate, it certainly, for the most part, is covered with a separate set of revenue and its fluctuations really just throw off averages and, and don't allow us to see the real picture of the operational cost of running the, the various parts of the government. So if I take that information over the last eighteen years and I put it on a chart, you'll see there's somewhat of smooth and consistent growth among municipal operations, which is the black line about two-thirds of the way down the screen. The education line, of course, a larger piece of the budget, a little steeper growth as you come into more recent years, mainly after the last operational override in the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. And then a much more consistent pattern with debt service being the most level light blue line there and then operating support municipal and education. Rather consistent as well, whenever you, again, spread, look at the dollars and spread it out over that eighteen-year period. Now, when I look at the average change, we obviously see something really differently. And I think ultimately, if there is an override question that's asked, one of the things that we may benefit from using this new model that we're considering, which we've called the Arlington Approach, we're using stabilization and things like that, would be smoothing of a, of a graph like this in the future. So you'll see there's a lot of swings and this, this is really showing the percent changes year-over-year. So not the dollars, but the percent. So there's really a lot of fluctuation variation among these numbers. You know, on any given year, there may be a five percent increase and then, you know, a one percent increase and so on and so forth. You know, as you can imagine and as you've experienced, it's kind of a difficult feast or famine situation to be in where you're trying to operate an entity like ours that spends a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty million dollars a year. Consistency is obviously much better. You can see we had a lot of consistency in the early two thousands and then there's been some consistency on the school side and the red line toward the, the most recent years. But we're, I think we really benefit from finding a way to really smooth this out, having more consistent and more planned for revenues, which will allow our expenditures to be leveled out and just be more thoughtful as we move forward from year to year. So just briefly, I won't spend a lot of time dwelling on these numbers, but I wanted to kind of break things down over the more recent history. So looking at the, the same statistics from the last ten years, you can see that the average dollar increase for both municipal and education is slightly greater than the full eighteen-year period, which can be expected on a dollar-for-dollar basis. Only a slight uptick in municipal percent increases, average increases year-over-year, education actually a little bit lower. So really a lot of consistency both over a ten and an eighteen-year period. And you'll see that the, the minimum and, or excuse me, the maximums still remain the same on the municipal and education side from the last ten years to the last eighteen years. Those numbers are exactly the same. So again, just moving forward, building in and including the increase that came into play in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen from the last operational override, we see very consistent with the, the full ten-year average. And whenever I'm looking at dollar-for-dollar changes, a, a lot of consistency over the entire last ten-year period with, with the five-year trend. When I look at the, the average percentage change, the municipal of the, this last six-year period looks more similar to eighteen. Education is a little higher over these recent years, again, because of the significant infusion of funds in the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget. If you were to move the two thousand and fifteen budget from this analysis, the municipal percent increase is three and a quarter percent. The educational percent increase, average year-over-year is three point ten. But there was that large infusion in two thousand and fifteen that benefited the schools and their operations, which, which were in need at that time, more so than municipal. So it's kind of the, the historic look at the numbers going backwards. Obviously, in our most recent experience with COVID impacts, looking at the budget, whenever I look at the fiscal year twenty-one budgets, the fiscal year twenty actual, you'll see there's a less than six-digit change in municipal operation, which is not similar to, to the prior, previous five-year period where we averaged about three-quarters of a million dollars, a little greater than that. Education, a little better than the five-year trend. Obviously, we did a lot of focus to try to free up some funding, given the additional challenges that the COVID nineteen put on their ability to educate students and the priorities that this community places on quality education as this board does and the school committee. And you can see that those are very reflected in the averages at the bottom of the screen, less than a half a percent for the municipal side and three point nine percent for the schools. So I'm going to move on. Just wanted to pause there through the chair and see if there's any questions about the historic data before we move forward.
Okay. Any questions from the board at this point? It's like everyone's good.
Okay, I will continue. So this is a slide that I don't spend a lot of time on because we talked about it a little bit in our joint meeting with the school committee, but I just wanted to reaffirm and recognize the fact that, you know, even when we were planning in February of two thousand and twenty, a lot has changed. Our local receipts are off by almost, well, well over three million dollars as to what the prior, the five-year trend was from two thousand and nineteen, looking backwards. And of course, we thought we'd be in a much more favorable position with the total amount of funding that we were contributing to pension and OPEP funding. But unfortunately, we need to stay the course for three more years and, and fulfill our obligations on that unfunded liability. So in total, I'm looking at a net change of revenues of nearly five point six million dollars, which is significantly contributing to a structural deficit and the need to determine if the community would support providing additional funding for our operations. So when I look at that.
Madam Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Would Kevin be so kind as to just step back to that one question regarding the pension, Kevin? So many people every day read the papers or see on the news how the market is doing so well. Can you walk people through the relationship of our continuing need to fund the pension, given how well the markets have been doing?
Yeah, so we have, we have experienced good market returns as well. The main driver in the extension of the funding is the recommended change by the actuary that was supported by PARAC, where we looked at the mortality tables. So given the fact that really over the previous ten-year trend longevity, life expectancy was longer than it had been since we updated the tables, we saw an effect on our actuarial analysis and that was the main driver rather than negative market cycles. So we, we have had the benefit of, of some of the good markets, but it just isn't enough to, to close that new gap that's been established. So again, we've provided ourselves with some relief. Obviously, we've reduced it significantly from our contribution of over five million dollars in fiscal year twenty-one, but that's the main driver behind that number. So looking at some scenarios, you know, there's really three key factors, I think, for a conversation that were started with the school committee last week and then really trying to frame a commitment to the community and illustrate what overall value and expectation residents, our residents should have whenever, if the, the Board of Selectmen would ask the question. So I've charted out for you here on the screen four different total request amounts on the left-hand side of the screen. You'll recall, used nine and a half million dollars as the sole analysis in coming into last Tuesday's meeting with the school committee. Across the bottom of that chart, you'll see the number of years ranging from zero to seven on the extreme right. And then the colored lines represent the total growth factor for municipal and school operations. So you'll see in the, the first analysis that we're looking at a, when I look at the, when you look at the blue line that's on the screen, that's utilizing a four percent growth factor for education operations and a three and a half percent growth factor for municipal operations. The red, four and a quarter for the schools, three and a half for the municipal, and then finally four and a half and three and a half. So we've, we've done significant analysis and I'm comfortable utilizing three and a half percent as an indicator to the board of what I think would be most prudent if, if the override question goes forward as a trend factor for municipal growth. It's obviously very consistent with the historic data. To be quite honest with you, the historic data affirmed the analysis that we had done rather than vice versa, as I really just took a deep dive into those eighteen-year increments over the last two days. So really, the, the main trend factors are the total amount of change that's going to occur within the education side of the budget. And it's obviously the largest part of the budget. It's, it's a critical determinant to make. And I know this is, these factors are what the board are looking at whenever you're wrestling with this decision. So I, you'll see if you kind of center in on the, the center two areas that, you know, if you're looking at like a four and a quarter growth factor for the schools and a three and a half for the town, that a override request of nine million would net out a, a commitment to the community, a forecast commitment to the community of four years. A request of a half a million dollars more than that provides sufficient funding to forecast a commitment of five years to the community. So increments really do matter. And there's some similarities over the total asks, just how the numbers play out. But when you look at the, the raw data behind these, in every scenario, years one and two, you're building money into the stabilization account that we've talked about and then the And then depending on the amount that the growth factor, sometimes year three, you're able to contribute a little bit of funding, but always in year four, you're, you're drawing money back out of the stabilization account. And those swing factors, that's what's really going on between nine and a half and nine million. If you look at a nine and a half million dollar request, you're putting three years worth of funding into the stabilization account, which gives you the ability to draw down upon those funds and get one additional year out of it of, you know, five full years forecast, where you just don't get that, you actually have to start drawing down from the stabilization account in the third year and every other scenario, which shortens your duration. So kind of understanding that with several options that provide either four or five years worth of commitment with, you know, reasonable of trend factors considered across all of them. Took that information and I put it into a tax, a tax bill impact scenario. So what, what I think the largest, or the the point that I want to drive home here is that there are certainly differences based upon the total amount of money that is being requested. But devil's always in the details and personal finances or personal finances. But from a pure number standpoint, the differences aren't that significant. And let me try to explain. So of these four models, the total difference between the lowest model and the greatest model on a quarterly tax bill basis is $21.22. So it's, it's $85 a difference between the eight and a quarter model and the nine and a half model. So if, if the difference between the two $500,000 models is, you know, $8.49 per tax bill or $3.95 cents for the annual bill. And these are generating tax rate increases anywhere from $1.46 to $1.27. So certainly, you know, rather significant increases on the tax bill. They're going to range anywhere from $555 from the median value of $441,000 up to, you know, about $650,000. But when you compare them to each other or compare the $500,000 increments, you're really only looking at about $33 per year for each $500,000 change in in request of funding to the residents. So again, I would just like to pause there. You know, my next slide is go into some thoughts about use of funding. So I think this would be good to kind of have more of a conversation about whether or not it's prudent to be asking.
Okay, let's stop here. And I do appreciate the many different ways that you've kind of put the data together and presented it. I think that, you know, everyone likes to look at things differently, different kinds of learners out there. And one of these charts that resonated specifically with me was the one that came before this one with the bars to really understand the impact between different override dollar amounts and different percentages. And I, I know sometimes when you watch meetings on TV from home, if you're on your phone or something, that's really kind of challenging for people to see it. Will these slides be someplace for residents to access tomorrow?
Yeah, we will absolutely put them up on the town manager's budget page and send out a news flash with them.
Okay, great, thank you. So any comments or questions from the board right now?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. DePaula.
I think when we're looking at this and thinking about what the correct amount and assumptions are for growth, we do have to consider what the impact is, particularly, you know, on houses at 440, 500,000 and below for the different amounts. But I think we also have to, because it's, I mean, certain people are going to be affected more disproportionately than others because of their own personal finances. So so there's a trade off between trying to keep the number as low as possible, but also looking at at the out years and how long it will last. And I, I think, and I, I don't have an opinion on which one we should go with, but, but I think if we modeled this out and, and only went, just say we went with the lower number and only had a three year run on it before we had to go through this scenario again. In the long run, it might end up costing more money, causing a, you know, a bigger jump being caused in, say at the 825. The money ended up costing more money because the the jump after that third year could, could be greater than what we see if we can even it out over the the longer period of time. And I think that was part of the modeling. So I think we need to be sensitive that there are going to be people, well, we're all impacted, but there are other people going to be impacted. Probably in a bigger way as a percentage of their income than others. But it's really, if we do decide to go ahead, it's really a balance between what the short term cost is going to be and what the long term cost is going to be. And I think the more we can move to stability, you know, with sensitivity to what the tax rate is going to be, I think in the long run, the residents are going to be better off in terms of the tax bill. But, you know, that's still something that I think we're going to be discussing over the next couple of years. But there is a trade off, there's no doubt about it.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Samia.
Just to follow up on Mr. DePaula's point, stability is an important word. We saw that one slide that Mr. Mizikard presented with the wild fluctuations, and there's a lot of value to not going in year in and year out if we go forward with this, to not sure if the operations in any given year, the next year, you can't do it when you're making, merely continuing forward, the operations that we're doing now, we're struggling to do that on any given years. And I think the added value of certainty, the cost of replacing people far exceeds, the replacement cost is always more. And at the end of the day, I think that having a good municipal services, a strong school system supports all of our property values. So I think all of it's inextricably linked. The one question I have here through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Mizikard, where does, we've read a lot or heard a lot about the stimulus passing. What if anything, or how does this impact this about talking about this this year? And does that change our thinking at all? There's so much uncertainty about that. It doesn't solve, whatever we get, doesn't solve our structural deficit. It'd be one time fees. But what are the thoughts? Does that alter an approach this year? Or what are the thoughts that the town manager has?
So I've actually been thinking about that quite a bit lately and having conversations with Dr. Sawyer and and Mr. Collins about it and other staff and trying to read as much as I can with what the details are going to be that come out of this federal stimulus package. I'm going to move forward to a slide where I've culminated some thoughts really anticipating questions like this this evening. So a couple, couple of things that, that I'm aware of. So I received documentation from the Federal House, US House Ways and Means with an estimate of total stimulus funding to the town of between seven and eight, 8.4 million. So certainly a substantial amount of money. There's no doubt about that. The board will recall the CARES Act funding initial allotment to the town was about $3.3 million. There was about $1.4 million in additional coronavirus relief funding that was earmarked specifically for school operations. And then, of course, the schools received additional stimulus funding of about $650,000 in early 2021. So we've used the CARES Act funding and those other sources for direct schooling to really offset the additional costs that that we've experienced in in day to day operations, mainly within the schools, but it certainly in other areas as well for our response to the pandemic. So thinking about getting slightly more funding than that in total, at least from this new package begs the question that you just asked. So there's still tons of uncertainty, plenty of uncertainty related to the use and limitations, the rules that will be made once it leaves Congress and makes its way to the Treasury, how those rules would be interpreted by, you know, the funds will flow into the state treasury and then they'll release guidance out to municipalities on how we can use those funds. For the CARES Act, there was 25 different buckets that we could allocate funding to or make expenditures through. And those are audited and we submit quarterly and, you know, we've hired specific staff just to manage that process for us. So there's a lot of uncertainty of what we're going to be able to use the funding for. But thinking about prior stimulus models that we've experienced where funds have flowed municipalities. First and foremost, we all know this is one time funding. So there's not going to be another federal stimulus package related to COVID-19 more than likely unless disaster strikes again. And, and there's reason to do so. So I really see this as the final package. No one's talking about anything else beyond this unlike some of the previous packages. So with this being a one time funding, we are looking at a structural deficit, meaning that we are not receiving enough money year over year to contain sustaining operations or maintain operations as you're seeing, you know, proposed cuts within the school department and the inability to fund levels, level service budgets on the municipal side year after year. So if you, quite simply, if you would take all the, you know, $7 million and use it rather than pursuing an override, it'd feel really good like a warm blanket for one year. But then no matter which one of those numbers that you picked in a previous slide, you would have to add almost $2 million in additional funding to do the same thing if you delay it just by one year and use these stimulus funds. You're actually building the cliff even higher if you use these funds for ongoing operations. That's not to say that there won't be benefits. Of course, there will be, you know, it's, you know, probably the the largest package that the town will have ever received. If it comes to fruition, we will certainly use those to continue our pandemic response measures. What do I mean by that? You know, the additional cleaning that goes on in the schools, we've had a lot of additional contracted staff. We take additional precautions or using a lot of equipment to sanitize the buildings. We've replaced that three or four times. So, you know, it's a very short life cycle and some of these products and materials, obviously, that we use, additional hand sanitizer, additional cleaning products, additional PPE for police and fire and those who deal one on one with individuals as part of their job, you know, all those things add up. Then there's, there's other, you know, kind of related, but, you know, unspecified or not directly tied pandemic measures. Certainly on the school side, there's plenty of literature and comments that have been made by the school committee and Dr. Sawyer about just the lack of effectiveness or the lack of ideal nature of a hybrid learning model and the fear that there is some aspect of the the student population that is not able to receive education in that way like they can in the classroom. And there may have been some regression or just not meeting the grade standards that they otherwise would. So I would see these funds going in hopefully this summer to really speed that recovery and, and deal one on one with those students who need additional support to get them that support that they need and just make this pandemic a blip on the radar and not a lifetime challenge for them. One of the the most promising things that I think we could get out of this is capital investments in schools and other public buildings. Even if that's earmarked for HVAC systems or upgraded, upgrades to things like that, that would be so substantial. We have a list of those projects already. We're nearly shovel ready and are dusting off, you know, those plans. We know the older systems, we know the systems that have the lowest filtration capability, and we can attack those with funding like this. And there could be opportunities if, if there's an option to use it to to supplant or to make up, excuse me, some of the lost revenues that we can clearly document from the pandemic. We can figure out a way to sustainably use some of this to offset revenues, again, if it's allowed, and not build the cliff. But that would require us to use these revenues and contribute more funds into the stabilization and really prolong the duration of the override, which would be a long term benefit to residents without sacrificing or further building the structural deficit that we've experienced. So those are the thoughts that I have right now, again, all subject to what we know today and significant amount of clarity that will come in the coming weeks and months about how we're able to use these fact, use these dollars. In comparison to last year, this bill will pass roughly three or four weeks in advance of the care, you know, ahead of the CARES Act on the counter. So I wouldn't anticipate receiving these, access to these funds until early May or receive information on how we'll be able to specifically use these funds until early May.
Thank you. The, some of the takeaways that are important from this slide, you know, it's one time, he said, like, it's a nice warm blanket. It doesn't solve the structural deficit issue. If we're, if prior grants, whether it's during the Great Recession, the era funds, there were a lot of restrictions tied to strategic investments, shovel ready projects, and they weren't unencumbered. Earlier CARES Act funding was, we spent millions of dollars on expenses that were never foreseen. And we don't really have a lot of that covered in our fiscal 22 budget, right? So this, a lot of these dollars could be millions as well to cover that, assuming we get that, that there aren't time limitations. So even under the best case scenario, this doesn't provide any clarity and it may provide some help, but it does not at all solve our issues that we're facing. So I shouldn't, the takeaway is, this is good, but there's most likely going to be a lot of restrictions tied to it, and it's only one time anyways. Okay, now, thank you. Thanks for that response.
Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Kane.
Kevin, could you remind us how delaying one year an override question requires an additional 1.8 million?
Sure. So what you're essentially doing is, is you would be unfortunately, having to lay off a number of individuals if you didn't have any new funding. But if you're going to use, if you're going to use the stimulus funds and backfill it with that one time revenue, you do not get the benefit of the 2% growth factor that comes on top of that. So that's the largest contributor to that. So you have to, you know, make up for the the two and a half percent growth factor on those dollars because they're not going to be in the tax rate. So there's no, there's no growth related to them. And then additionally, if we're trending year over year, cost increases called inflation or growth factor that you want at four and a quarter and three and a half percent, your expenses are even, you know, greater in the ensuing year. So it, you know, those two main factors, you're not getting any growth on your revenue and you're seeing growth on your expenditure side can make up that 1.8 million.
Okay, thank you. I will just note again, and thank you for the extremely thorough job you do for every one of these meetings, laying out the, the challenge and laying out the alternatives and how we might go about achieving them if the voter so supported it. I think it's just beyond critically important that the specifics around the 1.9 trillion dollars get mature, become mature to become more clear to all of us as we ask this question. Regarding, you know, whatever paper you pick up every morning, all it talks about is all the money being showered across America and specifically to primary and secondary ed. And I think this argument, though a rational one, is extremely difficult to make in a time when people believe money is being tossed at the municipal government. So I would appreciate it. And if we need to set up special meetings, Madam Chairman, as this becomes more clear, or maybe it won't until a month or so. But I think we need to understand it as it goes along and clarity arrives. If it's all public education money and it is limited, well, that might public education money and it is limited, well, that might push us in one directed, direction. But I can hear the argument now being made, why do you need more money when you're going to get so much from the feds? So if we go down this road, we're going to then need to make a commitment that if the question passed and if money's arrived, how we would go about not spending certain monies or pushing off into later years, certain dollars. We don't know what the flexibility is today, but I think that's one of the biggest balancing acts that we're going to face in the coming weeks. I may be making an obvious observation to, to, to some, but I think this puts the question in, in in question itself, because if people think we're going to get showered with money, I don't see a willingness to shower additional dollars simply based on the rational basis of the argument.
Anyone else? Right, Mr. DiBala. Yep, go ahead, Mr. DiBala.
Was somebody else going to talk, Mr. LaBarre, something?
No, I think you're good.
Um, I, I, um, I, I, I agree with the concept that, that Mr. Kane has raised. I've been thinking about that myself. I think certainly if we decided to go ahead with an override question, I think it'd have to be some commitment that if the federal money came in and it could be used this year, that perhaps we would do something like not levy the full amount of, of the override this year. Or something along those lines, but I think one of the things that's going to complicate this whole situation is that is a big timing issue here, looking forward to July first. And the longer that the clarity on the federal money is, it just doesn't become available. The further we're getting to a point of, of no return and making a decision on an override so that we know where we're going to be, what we're going to be able to do on July first. So you know, again, it's like, what's the right amount? And this one's going to be, when do you, when do you pull the trigger and have to make a decision? And, and certainly there's, there's a lot of complicated complications in there in terms of timing and I'm, I'm afraid that if we don't have some real clarity on this, well, certainly by the end of the month, if we wanted to have the question in May, you may have to step back and hold that decision or we might have to go ahead with whatever amount that's decided if one is with the best information that we have at the time. So I think it's an extremely complicated situation and I understand where the public's going to say, hey, one point nine trillion dollars is, is working its way through the pipeline, but we may not know when we're going to get it. We, we may not have clarity of when, of, of, of what the restrictions are. So I mean, there were a lot of things to think about over the next couple of weeks and I, I think that Mr. Kane's right. We may have to have more frequent meetings based on what we hear coming out of Washington and then in Boston. So it's just going to be, I think it's going to be a lot of moving parts and a very complicated decision to make. And, and if I might add, that's irrespective of of our, our feelings about, our understanding about how this is going to affect people's ability to afford it, which, which is a whole nother discussion. So there's a lot of things at play here and I, I just hope the public appreciates that this is not, it's not a simple question. It, it, there's going to be a lot of parts in it that are going to, one's going to influence the other and we don't know what the timing's going to be. So just wanted to impress on people that this is a moving, a very fluid situation, I guess.
Mr. Mr. Carr, is there any opportunity to send a letter to Congressman McGovern to see if perhaps we can get some clarity around the timing where we might get some details on this money?
Yeah, I'd be happy to reach out. Yes.
Thank you. If there's no further comments right now, you can go ahead and continue with your presentation.
Thank you. So as I noted at the beginning, these are just my thoughts right now. I, I think it's important to begin to frame what the impact of an override would be on operations. We, we spent a lot of time thinking about, talking about a number and and we, we've just looked at the expenditure side from a growth rate factor, but you know, kind of what does that mean? What is my vision for municipal operations? We've done a lot of, we've had a lot of conversations and we made a, a whole lot of progress and we had a whole lot of steam really last year at this time on some of the, some bigger picture organization-wide strategic planning with public engagement. So my recommendation, and I know work with the board will include an opportunity for residents to engage in the process of determining their priorities for out-year expenditures. Obviously there'll be, you know, much more limited ability to do that for maybe, you know, the first year, fiscal year twenty-two, but it, you know, is my commitment to work with the board and find ways to engage with the public so we can understand what it is that, that they're interested in having priorities for the funding for and, and work with that to, to bring it to fruition. So I, I, I wouldn't pretend to sit back and, and say that I, I'm going to illustrate where every dollar is going to be spent. Rather, I would like the engagement with the public. Moving beyond that and in concert with that, some of my preliminary thoughts include on the administration and finance side, I'll start with the most boring least public-facing aspects of this is I, I've seen a lot of, we have a lot of good systems in place, good pieces of software, good public-facing tools that we're just not utilizing to the fullest. Everyone probably knows that, that I'm a race fan and, and I like cars and I kind of liken this to, you know, the difference of, you know, so you bought a sports car, pick your favorite one. So you bought a Corvette. So it's one thing to buy the Corvette and get rid of the Malibu. You get some instant speed, but you need to refine it. You need to learn how to drive it. You need to learn how to analyze the data and then you can go race it and, and win races. So we've, we've taken that first step. We've put the software packages in place. But now we just need some additional support, additional process, additional data analysis to really bring those things to fruition, turn the systems up and, and make them function more. Not, not a lot of money here. You know, I think we need a, a data analyst, some additional financial support and oversight, which we've talked about for the fiscal year twenty-two budget process already. I think there's going to be substantial gains. We've seen in the DPW area, Mr. Howland and Mr. Snowden's leadership on bringing C-click Fix into fruition and really doing some deep analysis and dives on our utility billing and things like that. Whenever we spend time thinking about the systems and ways to interact with the public, we succeed in improving customer service. And I think this is an area across the board. If we work on our building permitting system or our financial management system and the integration of all of the above, we'll see some significant gains. With regards to public safety, adequate staffing levels for service expectations of our residents and employee safety, certainly twenty-first century policing thoughts, social workers within public safety, documentation, body cameras, things like that to really bring our approach along with the community services division that the chief has outlined. You know, I see as a possibility of bringing to fruition through that three and a half percent growth model. When we think about community development, bringing to fruition and continuing to work with the town center association, making, doing place building within the town center, adding the resources, doing the marketing, attracting developers for that area of town, providing dedicated economic development resources, perhaps an economic development director, perhaps just additional planning staff that frees up the ability of running from ZBA to ZBA meeting and planning more, the planning board meeting where again, we can focus on recruiting businesses, building tax base, filling out the Route twenty and Route nine corridors with commercial development that we've so long talked about, but didn't have the dedicated resource in place to do that. That's achievable. Public works, developing real community assets to improve the quality of life, tangible things like sidewalks, parks amenities, helping the trails, things like that to, to really have public-facing quality of life recreational opportunities, plowing more sidewalks, expanding the footprint of, of that level of service in the community is all achievable within that three and a half percent growth rate. And then when I'm thinking about human services areas, we have a lot of progress to be made with enhancing services for seniors and their families, doing our best to make sure that we're a dementia-friendly community and we can work with all ages to make sure that they can live their entire lifespan within Shrewsbury expand recreation programs, so not just the parks, but the programs that we offer within them, dedicate staff and provide additional opportunities, maybe more frequent events, weekly events, community gatherings, continue the love of Dean Park and other park aspects or assets that we have within the community. And certainly we know that the Shrewsbury Public Library is a gem and the library trustees have a clear vision and, and just provide that support that we're often handcuffed when we get to the, to the budget table there every spring with the finance committee. So again, very high level, very preliminary, but I just wanted to try to do my best to convey what does three and a half percent growth factor mean and what do I think is attainable over that five-year period? So thank you for that.
You want to stop here for questions?
Yes, that's actually the, the, the end of my slides. I apologize.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any questions or comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
Just two quick comments. The first one is the, I think these are great visions, but I think even more so, it's important if we move forward with a question to put forward a business case and these are all, I think, important factors to consider going forward with a modest increase, what residents could expect. So this encourage, I know these are preliminary, but as a, as a board and the town manager to sharpen this, we have a pretty short timeline to, to sharpen this. So I'd encourage continued fine-tuning of this, but it's a, a great preliminary list. And just to follow up on a comment from Mr. Kane earlier, you know, I just want to recognize the town manager for all the work that he's been doing. If you look at the data from fiscal year two thousand and three through fiscal year two thousand and twenty and twisting it and contorting it every way possible to look at the trends and not relying on trends in terms of going forward, which is all the more important, that the numbers are instructive. They give you a data point, something to reflect upon, but that's not where the town manager stops in terms of fine-tuning numbers to get in a position if we move forward to be able to commit for multiple years. So I just want to say a job well done and thanks for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Anyone else with comments or questions? Mr. Mr. Carr, I echo what my colleague, Mr. Samia said, but I would like to just note that I'm glad to see the strategic planning with public engagement listed here on this slide. At our final meeting in person, that was the direction that we were heading in. We were ready to put put money towards engaging in a strategic planning project so that we could understand exactly what it is the community would like us to be focusing on. Otherwise, the only way we know sometimes is when we get emails, people that are not satisfied with the services they're receiving or maybe think that the things that we're focusing on aren't what they wish we were focusing on. And so being able to pick up where we sort of left off a year ago and bring a process like that to fruition, I think will help us when we move towards setting goals as a board and looking at long-term planning because we won't be guessing at the things that the community wants us to focus on outside of the basic needs that need to be met by municipal government. I think also in that same vein of hearing from residents when they have a concern, things I hear most often, I hear about people wanting to see more traffic control and traffic monitoring. And so I see here under the public safety model, adequate staffing levels for service expectations. So I see that need being potentially met. I get, when it snows, I get people asking me when the sidewalks are going to get plowed on certain roads in town. And my answer is always, you know, the traditional, we have, you know, one sidewalk, two sidewalks, no plows and, and one person that drives them. So it takes this many hours to get around all the sidewalks. It's not a great answer, but again, it's a resource-driven answer. I hear from people about the parks and especially now when we've come to all appreciate the ability to get outside, really expanded use of our parks and people wanting to see more from our parks. And with that, I, I think of the lake and the need for increased patrols and monitoring of Lake Quinsigand, especially in those warmer months when people are taking to the lake in droves like they did last summer. And all of these things, all of these resident concerns, there are quality of life issues that are addressed in this vision for municipal operations that would be achieved if we were able to have some additional funding for our municipal department. So I want to thank you for this. I like what I see here very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no further questions or comments, let's move on to item number seven. But I actually, I should pause right here just to lay out a bit of a timeline for the community. We are planning to have another meeting with the school committee next Tuesday evening. It's a little bit of a different time for us, just in order to accommodate everyone's schedules on an off-meeting night. It's a seven-thirty meeting and it will be broadcast on Shrewsbury Media Connections website and also on channel three thirty. So if we are all set with item six, we can move on to item number seven, which is to review and act on a revised charge of the Police and Municipal Campus Building Committee.
I'm sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Carr.
If, if I could just brief context for this, you know, the committee was laid out as a Police and Municipal Campus Committee and we brought in, I think, the appropriate diverse mix of town staff and residents for that scope of the project. Specifically, it included the superintendent's appointee, Mr. Collins and COA Director appointee who misrooped is actually representing the COA. So I just think this is an opportunity to remove those two named positions with, within the, the scope of the current projects. We're just, since we're just focusing on the committee, I know that Mr. Collins certainly supports the project and the school committee supports the success of the project or, excuse me, the, the superintendent's office supports the the scope of the project that the municipal school committee there. So I, I think there may be an opportunity since Mr. Collins is a resident, he may want to stay on board, but I think it's appropriate to remove those two titles and, and, and expand those two positions and just be at-large appointments on the board slide. So that's the intent.
Would there also be a name change to the committee or do we just continue calling it Police and Municipal Campus?
Um, we, we could entertain it either way. It's not proposed in the markup document, but certainly makes sense to do that.
Any comments or questions from the board? I, oh, go ahead, Mr. DiBala.
Sorry, I lost, we have a microphone on. So if, if we do this, Mr. Mr. Carr, is the intent to advertise again for citizens who might be interested in, in being on the committee?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, there were some individuals that previously applied that we would reach back out to and then we could re-advertise for those two positions. Okay, thank you.
One of the things that came to mind when I was thinking about just calling it the Police Station Building Committee or however you wanted to call it is it just, I think, further solidifies the intention that we aren't moving forward with the town hall or the senior center at this time. with the town hall or the senior center at this time. And sort of takes that off the table for people who might otherwise think that that's something that's on the back burner. And our plan would be to move forward with those things once we finish the police station, when that couldn't be farther from the case.
That's a good point.
Okay, so we will need a motion in order to make this change.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number eight is to review and act to adopt the FY twenty-two active employee health insurance rates.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Although I'm not directly infected, infected, affected by this, not infected yet. I'm not affected by, by the rates of the active employees. I think there's a relationship between these and, and retired employees. And so I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion. And I'll join you at the end.
Okay.
Mr. Mizakar, do you have any idea the duration of this so I can, you know, go get dinner or something?
Please, please don't do that. It should be just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Five minutes, yep. So, so Madam Chair, before you this evening is a consideration of a vote to approve the active employee non-Medicare eligible retiree health insurance plans. These plans, which have been set and approved by the West Suburban Health Group Board and voted and approved by the Shrewsbury Insurance Advisory Committee, in total represent roughly a three point five percent composite, composite increase across all plans. The West Suburban Health Group, which I'm actually proud to be the board chairman of, is in a very unique situation where given limited medical procedures over the last year, we have been able to not only build our reserves to the ten percent level, which is the policy level of that board, but we've exceeded that by continuing to build reserves through this fiscal year. And the decision of the board was to set the rates at roughly half of what is required to raise the additional funds that are needed for fiscal year twenty-two. So we will rely upon this rate increase for about four million, three and a half million dollars of new funding and then use the available surplus balance of the West Suburban Health Group to offset the additional balance. If trend continues, we would likely do that again next year. There's just so much uncertainty in the health insurance market with whether or not the pent up demand that we believe exists will actually, how long it will take for those individuals to go back and resume elective procedures and see their doctor again. So very happy, it's a three point four percent composite increase and I would recommend that the board adopts this rate.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Mizakar? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Will approval, let's suppose.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, Mr. DiPaolo, you can come back, join us again if you're able to hear us. Item number nine is to review and act on the adoption of the draft Board of Selectmen Policy Number Twenty-eight regarding the board appointment to boards, committees, commissions, and ad hoc committees. And I would like to thank Selectmen DiPaolo for recognizing the need for this policy to formalize our practice and provide greater transparency around the appointment process. I'm not sure if you'd like to speak to this item.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the the purpose of the written policy is really to just codify what we've been doing and take out any I don't know, ambiguity, or at least put some, make sure that we have consistency, although I think we've been pretty consistent on how we've handled appointments. I know there's been an informal policy of the board that to the greatest extent possible, we tried to only put an individual on one standing committee at a time to try to to try to get the broadest possible distribution of, of people throughout the community on the boards and give the greatest opportunity for people to participate. And it, it really again is just an attempt to codify what we're doing and outlining the circumstan- circumstances under which the board may decide that it's important because of somebody's skill set in a certain situation, that it, it would benefit the town to have somebody sit on two boards. But particularly in the past few years, at least I would say the past couple of years, where we've started to get such a, a good group of applicants, which for several years, it wasn't that we didn't get a good group of applicants, it just was a lack of people applying for the positions. Now that we have that, I think it's important to send a message out to the community that yes, in fact, we are looking for people and we'd like to have them participate if possible. So it just outlines what the policy is, how we handle appointments to standing committees, and then what the policy is on ad hoc committees, which are, which are different. Because you may want, depending on the circumstances, you may want members of different boards and committees to be part of an ad hoc committee because of the certain expertise that they would all bring to that committee. But the ad hoc committees do a job and then they're finished. And then we'd go back to, you know, everybody go back to the respective board. So I, I researched as many appointment policies that I could find throughout the state. And I think what we did informally actually was as good as, or in some cases actually better than some of the other towns. But tried to pull all of that together and put it into, I hope, one coherent policy. And so that is what before the board this evening.
So a question, when we, if we were to vote this as policy and someone is on two boards currently, just so the public understands, what would that, what would be the process for that person?
Well, and the, and the, in the cir- in, in that particular situation, the, the, the person who is on the two boards would, would stay, wouldn't have to immediately get off one, but when the term of one of them ends and that person would be up for reappointment, at that point, the board would, would give the, the individual the opportunity to express interest in which committee they would prefer to stay on. And if, if they decided to be on A, if they decided to not seek reappointment, then they would be on the, the remaining committee. If they decided to seek reappointment and the board chose to and voted to reappoint that person, then they would be asked to resign from the other committee to open up the opportunity for somebody else. And, and, and they would actually be expected to do that, to open up that opportunity. So that's currently how it's set up.
Now, and I know that we've had, you created a draft and we've had it in the drive. We were able to comment on it through the manager's office. So I think that everyone should have had an opportunity to take a look at it and make changes. So what we have in our drive right now has some proposed comments marked in red that we can take a look at and either decide to adopt this evening or postpone. If people need.
Madam Chair, I might just say one thing on, on, unlike four, five and six. I, I'm pretty sure that after I submitted the initial draft, basically, those were reorganized. So that they were on top of the broad part of the policy instead of sitting in the specific standing or ad hoc, because they were something that were, that was relevant to both. So those, those weren't necessarily new from what the original draft was that I submitted. They're just put in a different place.
Right. I mean, it's all here, the way I, as I read it in the draft, I do notice that it's just moved and not necessarily a different piece of content. Are there any other questions or comments from board members on this policy?
Madam Chair. Uh, one comment and then a suggestion. I think it's a good policy. I think it formalizes. I, I think it also sets a clear set of rules for applicants as well as those sitting on possibly multiple boards. Section two, understanding committees, the language for the waiver of the position, the waiver of that provision, I think needs to go on the one above the, the paragraph before. Just because the waiver goes to being able to sit on two boards, but folks who are on a, a non-elected board committee, commission can go on an ad hoc committee, that's not a problem. It's sitting on multiple boards requires a seventy-five percent, right?
So you're saying after the word otherwise?
Yeah, I think it goes up there. And just, I, I think it's well done. Mr. DiPaolo has another career as a lawyer coming on, so well done. The only suggestion is, is that it may be worthwhile just to have town council take a quick peek at it. But that, that's, I'll leave to my colleagues to, to opine on too, just given what it's saying and what we're, we're looking, looking to do as well as, you know, talking about the variety in background just to make sure there are no footfalls. But I don't think it would take a long, long for a review, but that's just a suggestion on my part.
Mr. DiPaolo, what do you think? Do you have any other thoughts around it?
No, I guy, whichever line it's on, I think it's just important that, that, that sentence is included in there. But yeah, town council wanted to take a quick look at it. I don't have a problem with that. I mean, this isn't a legal document, it's only a board policy. But just to make sure that we didn't inadvertently trip some provision that in the law that we didn't intend to, that'd be fine.
Okay, so Mr. Mizakar, if you could take care of that for us. But then the other thing too, that I would like to see is that when we do advertise for vacancies on boards, committees or commissions or ad hoc committees, that a copy of the policy is included. When we do that advertising so that people can reference it and take a look at it, I wouldn't expect people to be searching through our policies on the website, trying to decide whether or not they're eligible to be a part of one of these committees. So are we able to vote on this, this evening, just pending review of council?
Madam Chair, unless there's some strong desire and need to do this tonight, I would like to have a little more time with it.
Okay, good with everyone else? Take a week, let council see, take a look at it, bring it back on the twenty-third. I see nodding. I'm going to go with yes. That's what we're going to do. All right, so we're going to move on then to item number ten, which is under old business. And it's to review and discuss the draft of the Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw.
Madam Chair. I, I'd like to ask the board's indulgence to, to also hold this until the twenty-third. I had been waiting for some more information that arrived to me. To be honest, I, it went to one of my email accounts on Friday and I didn't see it until Monday. And didn't realize it was there until someone told me it was. So I didn't have time to read all of it. And Mr. Samia and I were working on that. We didn't have a chance to even discuss it. So if it's possible, and it's not urgent, if we can wait till the twenty-third, I think we could come back with some comments, at least as, as regards to the Affordable Housing Trust. To be honest, I don't, I don't know who's looking into Mr. Kane's question as to whether or not we need to do it by the trust or not. I thought town council might have been, but I'm not, I'm not sure. I, I haven't seen anything on that. So maybe we could have answers to both of those on the twenty-third.
Okay, I see Mr. Mizakar taking notes and nodding. All right, so that will move to the twenty-third. Okay, that brings us to item number eleven, which is to review and discuss the Draft Community Preservation Act Bylaw, which was on, on agenda our last meeting. And we made some suggestions and comments and it's back in your drive with those comments and suggestions reflected. So I will say, just to bring the public back up to speed on this, the Community Preservation Act passed at the November election. And so the next step in the process is to have a bylaw to create a community preservation committee. And then required by law on the committee has to be one member of the Shrewsbury Conservation Committee Commission, one member of the Shrewsbury Historical Commission, one member of the Shrewsbury Planning Board, one member of the Shrewsbury Parks Recreation and Cemetery Commission, and one member of the Shrewsbury Housing Authority. And at our meeting, our last meeting, we decided that we would also like to have four members appointed at large and that we had the option to go with fewer than that. You can do a seven member board or you can do a nine member board. And we all agreed on the nine member board. So that would be four members appointed at large and the decision was around how those appointments would take place. And in this document, it says of appointments by the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen. And that the only requirement around becoming a point, a member at large would be a resident of Shrewsbury. So there is no requirement to be a registered voter in this draft. And then there would be a staggered appointment term. Two appointees for three-year terms, one appointee for a two-year term, and one appointee for a one-year term. Commission, the committee up and running. So that's where we are.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr..
This actually reminded me of something in the, in the appointment policy. Where, where the policy is no more than one standing committee at a time. There is a cava in here for members of, of standing committees who by statute, by law, or town charter are mandated to be in, on another committee. And, and this is an example of that because, you know, not to repeat everyone you said, but those five, those five boards and authorities, whatever, they're required by, by law, this is by law, they have to be on this committee. So that rule of not being on two standing committees would not affect that, that situation. Because it's mandated, they have to be there.
Correct. Also, the elected Shrewsbury Housing Authority member would also be able to participate.
Right, right. Just didn't want to confuse anybody when they hear one thing and talk about one policy and then we go on to the next, so.
You definitely covered that in the policy. I think that's a really good point for people to understand. Are there any further edits, changes, discussion around this bylaw?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Kane.
Um, I, I think the bylaw's in fine shape and I would, if the body approves it this evening, I would also make a motion at an appropriate time that we advertise for those four positions. You know, a number of years ago, members of the board, this board at that time, thought the town clerk should go from being an elected position to an appointed position. And if my recollection of history is correct, when the board went to town meeting seeking their support, they were very clear upfront, as we try to be, that a certain individual, a professional within the office would be their appointment. So there were no secrets, there were no worries about whose brother-in-law might wind up with the job. It was all already out there. And I, I think it can only strengthen the position as we go to town meeting to have advertised, and if the calendar allows such interviews, et cetera, allow those appointments to be known at town meetings. So once again, people who have displayed a track record of being interested in this, I have a chance to appoint. So once again, people who have displayed a track record of being interested in this, have a chance to appoint. And parties at town meeting understand who will be on the board if approved at that town meeting.
Thank you for that suggestion. I would agree that that is a direction I think makes sense. Not only do town meeting members know in advance and the community knows in advance who would be filling those positions, but I think that also a priority is not having any delay in getting the CPC up and running so that they can get started on the work that they need to do in order to use and distribute those CPA funds to do projects within the community that we're certainly looking forward to. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, so we need to, well, this just says review and discuss, so I'm assuming that we cannot vote on this this evening. Am I correct, Mr. Mizikar?
Yeah, that, that wasn't our intention. We would keep that open kind of until we got into the final stages of the town meeting work process incorporated that time.
So what would be the process then for advertising for interested persons to submit letters?
We certainly can handle that based upon how the bylaw is drafted and do so right away if that's, since that's the request.
I'm seeing nodding from the board.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I, I know we can't vote on this tonight, but Mr. Mizikar, are we going to sign the warrant on the twenty-third?
No, the first meeting in April. If, if the board is interested in voting to solidify this, we can certainly bring it back at the next meeting. But yeah, the first meeting in April is the word.
My preference would be that on the twenty-third, if everybody's okay with this now, that we put this on the agenda to vote, that this would be the article that we would put on to form the committee on the town warrant. And then we can ratify that at, you know, when we sign the warrant. I think it's important that people know what we're doing about this. And I think it would help us get the process going because I think to advertise it now without even having voted that we're going to bring this forward is a little too open. I mean, as it is, the, the appointments that we would be making would be subject to the affirmative vote at town meeting. So I, I, unless the rest of the board wants to wait until the first week in April, I would just as soon vote on this on the twenty-third so we can start the process.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
I see nodding. Okay, very good. So that's what we will do. So if you could just add this to the twenty-third also. Thank you. All right, and that brings us to correspondence. So item number twelve is a letter dated February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one from Nick Recca, Highway Division Manager to Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, regarding the snowstorm report February eighteenth through the twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, which was a four-inch accumulation over a two-day period of time. And it's so nice to talk about a snowstorm when it was sixty degrees outside today. And item number thirteen is an email dated February nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one from Melanie McGee, Community Preservation Bylaw Committee, twenty-eight Oak Ridge Way, regarding the Community Preservation Committee Bylaw. Item number fourteen is an email dated February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one from Sandra Fritz, Chair of School Committee, regarding the FY twenty-two Superintendent Budget Reduction Plan. Item number fifteen is an email dated February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one from Melanie McGee, Community Preservation Bylaw Committee, twenty-eight Oak Ridge Way, regarding the Community Preservation Committee Bylaw. Item number sixteen is an email dated February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one from Kathleen Cohen, Director of Development and Volunteer Activities regarding the Shrewsbury Public Schools Telethon. That was done over this past weekend to raise money for the performing arts. And if anyone had a chance to watch it, I watched one night of it and was just blown away by the talent of our students. You can stream it live off the Shrewsbury Media Connection YouTube channel. It's certainly worth watching these talented students perform. Item number seventeen is a letter dated March first, twenty-twenty-one from Mary Claire Rigby, Lead Specialist, National Grid, nine thirty-nine Southbridge Street, Worcester, regarding the Transmission Vegetation Maintenance Notification. Item number eighteen is an email dated March second, twenty-twenty-one from Anthony Sensi, CMRCP, one Mercantile Street, Suite five twenty, Worcester, regarding the twenty-twenty-one Shared Services Survey. Item number nineteen is an email dated March first, twenty-twenty-one from Ginger Reckemeier, one Bayview Drive, regarding the cemetery plan for Prospect Park. And Ms. Reckemeier had questions regarding the plans for the cemetery expansion in Prospect Park. Many will know that that property has always been earmarked since I think the seventies to be the expansion area for Prospect Park. And so there was a meeting that was held, it was a public hearing last week. And again, that's probably being rebroadcast on Shrewsbury Media Connection and probably can be found on their YouTube channel also that gave the presentation from the consultant about that expansion. And it is, I found it interesting to watch because it's not a cemetery like we see at Mountain View Cemetery. It's very different and meant to be an area where it's passive recreation and fits in with the, the the area of Prospect Park that it's going to be in. So trails would be maintained and all of the recreation activities of walking and hiking would still be allowed because it doesn't take up the entire park. So I would encourage residents to watch that presentation if they have questions. Item number twenty is a letter dated March second, twenty-twenty-one from Mary Piccetti, Director of Capital Planning MSBA regarding the Town of Shrewsbury Beale Elementary School. And this was in a response to an inquiry from the town manager at the request of this board and the school committee regarding the possibility of the Beale School being unable to open due to the financial situation that we find ourselves in. So that letter came back to us and we're still working with the MSBA on implications and next steps. Item number twenty-one is an email dated March fifth, twenty-twenty-one from David Snowden, DPW Business Manager, regarding the sewer fee analysis. Again, a public hearing was held last evening. It took about forty-five minutes for the entire meeting and it's a very detailed analysis that Mr. Snowden put together. I would encourage residents, if they're interested in the sewer fee rate increase, to go ahead and take a look at that to understand what's driving the rate increase and the proposed timeline. I know that there were not any members of the public that decided to comment last, last night. And so the Sewer Commission did decide to continue the hearing and they are keeping it open through next Monday night, which I believe is March fifteenth. And so they encourage people to either speak at that hearing or send an email so that they can provide written comments. But the Sewer Commission is likely to vote next week at that meeting. And so if public, if the public wants to make a comment, the time for that is quickly closing. And then finally, items number twenty-two through thirty-nine on tonight's agenda are all emails related to the school budget override and the deficits in support of putting a question before the voters. And we've spoke at length about this this evening and at other meetings, just to say that we are receiving your emails. We are reading them. I'm personally responding to the emails that come in from residents. And I hope that the, the discussion tonight and the presentation tonight did demonstrate the kind of issues and different variables that we are grappling with as we work through this process. I will remind the community that this board does have until March twenty-eighth to make a decision around an override to be placed on the May fourth ballot. And so we, as you could see tonight, are going to need quite a bit more time before we come up with a question and an opportunity to vote. So if there is nothing more to come before the board in open session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mr. Kane.
Bye, good evening.
And myself, aye. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good evening.